Good evening, welcome to the September 22 Valley View School Board Meeting. Mr. Venegas, would you kindly lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board affirmation statement, Ms. Hanson.
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students' learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. Dr. Mitchum, agenda.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to ask that the Board approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those effects say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, nice to have it. Consent agenda items, Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve consent agenda items 5-1 through 5-7. 5-1, board meeting minutes, September 8, 2014. 5-2, executive session meeting minutes, September 8, 2014. 5-3, gifts for Beverly Skoff and Woodview Elementary Schools, as well as Romeoville High School. 5-4, student activity contracts for Humphrey with Right Bite Fundraising. 5-5, student activity contracts for Humphrey with Savory Foods. And 5-6, ISBE, shared services or outsourcing. And finally, 5-7, resolution number 1495, semi-annual review of executive session meeting minutes to determine need for continued confidential treatment and authorization of destruction of executive session tapes more than eighteen months old. So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded, any further discussion? If not, roll call vote please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sekora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Next up, pillars of Valley View. I would like to ask Rick and Leo to go to...
First would be Romeoville High School.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kender.
Mr. Derrick Kender.
They travel heavy. Are you guys the ones who brought the TVs? It's on now, the light just went on. You gotta be a techie guy to know how to do that. You have to.
That's right.
He went to school for that.
He's got a degree in that. We get a lot of that over at RHS, you gotta figure that out quick.
Thank you.
So, good evening, President Quigley, Vice President Goojus, Treasurer Hanson, and members of the Board, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, members of the audience, and members of the community. It gives me great pleasure this evening, on behalf of Romeoville High School, to nominate Mrs. Rachel Dieter as a pillar of Valley View. Rachel is currently in her seventh year at Romeoville High School. Towards the end of last year, she stepped up in a maternity leave absence for our core content administrator, Mrs. Jessica Eman, to step up and lead the department, all while still teaching five classes and implementing a new geometry curriculum along with it. She's kept that pace this year, is stepping up, and also being our department chair. At the beginning of this year, upon Mrs. Eman's return, she's done all of that with implementing a new math curriculum, taking on a brand-new AP Stats course, and also is our head girls' cross-country course. So after she's done teaching all day, she'll go out and knock out about six miles and coach, and then come back through, and still have time to plan effectively for all of her outstanding and engaging meetings. But without a doubt, Rachel is one of the best that we have to offer in terms of the math department and the whole staff at Romeoville High School, so without a doubt, Rachel Dieter, pillar of Valley View on the half of Romeoville High School.
Big picture.
Wide-angle lens.
Members, Goojus and Venegas said they'd go run six miles with you tomorrow afterwards. I will be at mile 1.5 when they pass out, to help them drive home safely. Brooks Middle School, Dr. Woods if you would please. Mr. Felice and Ms. Sekora. Oh, just Ms. Sekora? Okay. They cut a deal. You only get the...
To the members of the Board of Education, Senior Leadership, Dr. Mitchum, and members of the Valley View School District Community, the Brooks Middle School nominee for the pillar of Valley View is Mr. Charles McDermott, art teacher and key leader. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. McDermott as a pillar of Valley View recipient for Brooks Middle School. With over ten years of classroom experience in the district, Charlie is an active participant of our school community, and is highly regarded by our students, staff, and parents. He goes to great lengths to develop well-rounded students by providing them with enriching experiences in our class and through extracurricular activities such as Art Buddies, Art Club, and Scholastic Art Workshops. As a tech coach and key leader, Charlie provides immeasurable support to his colleagues to enhance their instructional practices. Charlie is an advocate for ongoing professional development, which he models through his attendance at a variety of workshops and external teaching experiences. He is also a professional artist, whose work is showcased in gallery shows and has been displayed in various formats around our school, and I'm sure he'd be thrilled if you wanted to talk to him about some of his work. His love of art and artistic expression in various formats serves as a model for our student learners to transcend consumerism to become creators of content. It is an honor to know and work with Charlie, as he is well-deserving of this recognition as a pillar of Valley View. Congratulations, Mr. Charlie McDermott.
And last, but certainly not least, BJ Ward Elementary School, Member Campbell.
Good evening, President Quigley. Vice President Goojus, members of the Board, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership and guests. Tonight, we are pleased to introduce Brandon Guernsey as our BJW Ward pillar of Valley View. Mr. Guernsey is our outstanding fifth-grade teacher at BJ Ward. Mr. Guernsey, over the past five years, has achieved tremendous results for both his fourth and fifth-grade students. Any given day in this classroom, you will hear and witness student-teacher interactions that are all based on trust, and that it's okay to make a mistake, and to try again, and that there are multiple ways to solve a problem. He often is seen eating lunch with his students, or even future students, in the lunchroom. He not only does volunteer work in the morning, where he voluntarily provides tutoring, he also runs the before-school basketball program. In addition, he runs our Friday after-school sports program. Mr. Guernsey also facilitates a summer sports and fitness program for students to provide them another opportunity to stay active and fit over the summer. It is a pleasure to recognize Mr. Guernsey as a pillar of Valley View.
We used to call that the MBA, the Morning Basketball Association. Next up, Leo Zanderports, board from my right, any and all please.
I have a report. Take off my glasses to see, that sounds crazy. I was on a conference call today with the White House Initiative as a member of the National Black Council, and I just read a little glance about what My Brothers Keeper is that, and they were asking school district mayors, entrepreneurs, businesses, and community leaders to get involved in the My Brothers Keeper. And urgency about it, I just got the conference information, about twelve, and they went on at one, but they still want us to consider, looking at this, is this something that the district would be interested in? So I am bringing this to the Board to see if this is something that we're interested in, and the interesting thing about the White House Initiative is, they want us to look at it and decide in three days. Okay? So let me just give you some highlights about it. In February 2014, President Obama launched the My Brothers Keepers. Everybody like acronyms, MKB, initiative to address persistent opportunity gaps faced by boys and young men of color, and ensure that all young people can reach their full potential. The initiative seeks to organize and capitalize on the commitment of community leaders in order to reach their goal. Starting this fall, the administration will take the next crucial steps in this effort by issuing a challenge to the cities, the towns, the county, and the tribes across the country to become MKB communities. This challenge represents a call to action for all members of our community, and mayors in particular, as they often sit at the intersection of many of the vital forces and structure components needed to enact suitable changes through policy, programs, and partnership. In addition to issuing this challenge to the mayors and local officials, the Obama Administration has conducted outreach to business leaders, nonprofit, and local school systems who are organizing themselves independently to support community efforts. The MKB community challenges encourages communities from cradle to college and career strategies for improving the life outcomes of all young people, including boys and young men of color. It is important to underscore that this is not a federal-funded program, but rather a call to action, and a targeted effort to convey leaders, identify vector strategies, and work together to accomplish our shared goal of improving life outcomes for young people. We encourage you to use this for your planning and outreach with the understanding that you may have already begun some of the steps. And the steps are, they want us to lay a groundwork, and I'll forward these emails on to you, to accept the President's challenge, convene a local action summit within thirty days, and conduct a policy, and review recommendation for action within ninety days, and then launch a plan of action, next steps, and a timetable for review within a hundred and twenty days. And that's the President's challenge of the My Brothers Keeper that I'm presenting to the Board and to the community.
Thank you. Rick, anything?
Member Ford.
From the left?
Nothing today.
All right, moving down the agenda. Anybody in the audience who wishes to address the Board this evening? Please step forward, state your name, where you're from, if you're going to speak, kindly do that individually.
Good evening, members of the Board and audience. My name is Mike Baker. I am the General Manager of the Sears Logistics Distribution Center, right here in Romeoville. And our purpose for coming tonight is to recognize Romeoville High School and Mr. Kender, if you wouldn't mind joining us up here. Each year, our distribution center holds a National Logistics Forklift Rodeo Event. We bring in contestants from all over the United States to compete in a national rodeo event. This year, in order to make our event a little more special, we invited Mr. Kender to see if the band could come over and join us and play during the event, and the drum line came and played during the event. The ROTC came and did the color guard while we did the National Anthem, and a young lady from the high school sang the National Anthem. Out of all five years that I've been involved with this, this was by far the best event that we ever put on, and that is the feedback that we got from our home office, and they were very impressed with Mr. Kender and the high school students. They were all just, it was a pleasure to have them there in our building. If I could, real quick, let me introduce my staff. This is Julie Schneider, she's the Assistant General Manager. Greg Ansberry, our Transportation Manager. Jackie Barnes, one of our Senior Operations Managers, and Tom Diamonto is the Senior Operations Manager. At this time, Julie has something she would like to present to Principal Kender.
The Sears Logistics Distribution Center would like to thank you for your participation and support during our 2014 National Logistics Lift Truck Rodeo Event. Everyone that attended the rodeo was so impressed with the level of talent that each one of your groups displayed. The jazz band and the drum line were absolutely phenomenal. The young lady that performed our National Anthem, Lindsay, did a fantastic job. The precision of our National Anthem, the young lady that performed the National Anthem, Lindsay, did a fantastic job. The precision of the ROTC color guard was only matched by their perfectly pressed and sharp-looking uniforms. The ability to broadcast this event all over the United States and Puerto Rico was something we never thought we would be able to do. The students of your Career and Technical Education Department made this possible. The Romeoville High School should be very proud of the way they were represented by the students that participated in the event. We value your partnership and your commitment to the community. We look forward to working with your talented students and faculty again in the future. Thank you so very much.
Principal Kender, it is our pleasure to donate these two TVs to your high school to use as however you need to.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, team. I mean, just real quick, just to sum it up, and I know, try to be short and brief with this, but the opportunity that our kids did get on that Thursday morning, last Thursday, was outstanding, to be able to communicate with a team like this, as professional, of an organization that Sears is, and to see the logistics operation work firsthand. Our kids were absolutely amazed, and all of the adults and senior VPs and contestants were equally amazed by our kids on their communication skills, their ability to converse about the questions that they had about logistics, and also their just talent performance that they were able to put on. So it was a win-win for us. All those kids were up at 6:30 in the morning at the Sears logistical place, getting ready and putting on the rodeo, playing and everything else, and just going all the way through. It was a really, really cool event, and I said this joke last time, when I was up there on stage, I'd like to say that that wasn't my first rodeo, but coming from Chicago, it was. So, thank you again, Board, for the opportunity, and thank you again Sears, we'll definitely use these two TVs. We already have plans for them, to put one in our guidance office for our Career and College Readiness Program, to run ongoing college advertisements in our guidance department, and the other TV is going to go into our LMC to promote our library and our career study skills that goes on in our library as well. So thank you Sears, and thank you Board for the opportunity to let our kids go over there, appreciate it.
Outstanding. Mr. Baker, before you leave, I'm some of a hillbilly and was raised on a farm, and I've actually been in a rodeo or two, but my question is, I've never seen a lift truck rodeo, but I've driven a lift truck, so now you gotta explain what that is.
I'll explain it from a city perspective.
We're talking about forklifts.
Yeah, they basically, they had competitors from all over the country, all the way from Puerto Rico, Colorado, Washington, Florida, all over California, all over, to actually compete in obstacle courses and different techniques in far as the lift gates that go. They were all timed and navigating through a course. They actually had to lift a basketball, and drive it across, and shoot a basket into a ten-foot basket off of a forklift, lifting boxes, precision, all of those things, it was all included. And the one thing, they were talking about broadcasting it over the world, so all of these different distribution centers could see it. Our TV Media Club was able to use our High School Cube Program to live webstream it all around the whole country. We had over like four-hundred-and-fifty hits live going around the country to see it, to where we had the drivers from Puerto Rico were doing like screenshots, and were getting tweets back because they were watching it live in Puerto Rico in Romeoville from the Sears logistical, and it was all put on by our kids and just ran the complete thing all the way from start to finish, so pretty cool.
You know, I want to thank Sears and Principal Kender. I know that you guys have worked together before, not just on this project. Principal Kender's told me about times that you have seasonal opportunities and jobs for kids at our high school, and they just need to show up with his card, and they're in the door, so we appreciate your partnership, Principal Kender. We greatly appreciate you reaching out to the community and giving our kids these kind of experiences.
I think it's important, we drive by these ginormous big boxes, you know, eight-hundred-thousand, a million-square-foot buildings, and probably ninety-nine percent of the kids have no idea what goes on in those buildings, nor do most of the adults. And we are the logistical hub of America, right here. I mean, fifty-five, eighty, this whole corridor, you know, one of the largest rail yards in the country is just south of here. So to give these kids an opportunity to see what is actually going on in one of these buildings is pretty cool, too, so I really appreciate that. And you guys will do it next year, right? He'll do anything for a couple fifty-one and flat screens, come on. You guys are welcome to come by the building anytime for a tour. Can we get an invitation this next year? Absolutely. Could you send something to the Board, because I'd get up at 6:30 for that. Absolutely. Thank you. Well, I'm up at 6:30, anyway. Next up, Mr. Ken McConaughey.
How are you?
Joined by Ryan Lawrence. Mr. Con, if you would, once they get done with their picture, go ahead and, you want to do your introductions, since you're on the camera, anyway.
President Quigley, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Mitchum, Distinguished Superintendent, I'm here with Hart Haven Outreach, want to congratulate you on the success of the school district. Thank the School Board members, it's been twenty years since I sat out there as a School Board member, so it brings back fond memories, do you have fond memories?
Welcome home.
Thank you. Been a member of the Board of Directors of Hart Haven Outreach for a little over eight years, and have had the privilege of hiring Ryan Lawrence. He's been with us about eight years, so he's going to give us a brief overview of the programs Hart Haven Outreach offers to the Valley View School District students, which I think helped contribute to the success of our students. We've been involved with the district's Alternative to Suspension Program since its inception, but it recently occurred to us, we haven't bragged to you about it, we haven't told you about it, so that's what we're going to do tonight, how we assist the youth of our community. So Ryan Lawrence, who is our program director, and really, he's our pillar, and he's been a member of your Alternative Suspension Committee, who's going to give you a brief overview of all that we are doing to support the struggling teens in our community.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me, and thanks, President Quigley, Dr. Mitchum, School Board. So I'm just going to go quickly through an overview of what H2O looks like. I know some of you have heard of our program, a lot of you have seen us maybe in parades and places like that, but are still not quite sure everything we do, so it is quite extensive. I'll try to go through it quick. I've never competed with a Bears game, so let me do this. So Hart Haven Outreach, affectionately known as H2O, we've been around since January 2005 was when we opened our doors to the students here in Valley View School District. We're coming up on our ten years here this year, and we feel we've done a lot in this community, and so like Ken said, we thought it would be appropriate to come up here and kind of share with you all what we've been doing for the students. We are a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit, we serve both Bolingbrook and Romeoville, and our focus is on supporting teens who are experiencing challenging times. Our mission is to reach out to the hearts of teens, provide mentoring, support, and opportunities for life transformation. So, we're located 201 Canterbury Lane, it's right down the road from the Bolingbrook High School, very easy location for those students to walk to on nice days. Before I move on with our programs, I just wanted to let you know about some of the people who are behind us. We're definitely a community program. We were created by community members who saw a need for the youth who are struggling, and were put together from them. So right now, our Board of Directors consists of our President, William Mayer, of the DuPage Township. You met Ken McConaughey just a few seconds ago. Chris Ruddy, the Assistant Principal over at Bolingbrook High School, is our Secretary. Michelle Boschnick, Community Outreach Coordinator here at Valley View School District, sits on our Board. Dan Felice, as you know, sits there. Gloria Murtaugh, from the Housing Council, Community Service Council, is with us. Leo Venegas, with Comcast, sits on our Board, as well as Maria Zarate from the Village of Bolingbrook. So our staff is, our Executive Director, Pat Clare, myself, Program Director, Colleen Heitlich, Bolingbrook grad from 2009, is our Youth Outreach Specialist. Diana Cow, our Office Assistant, and Lindsay Smith, our founding Executive Director. She is a consultant for marketing and training with us. She helps create this organization. Some of our founding members, Meredith Brownfield, your own Leroy Brown, our Deputy Mayor in Bolingbrook, Ruth Newell, Isaac Palmer, Mary Steveen, are all founding Board members. So I share this with you just to kind of let you understand how much of a community effort this organization is. So now, let me get into the program side of H2O with how we do things. We understand there's a lot of barriers in programs that kids want to be a part of, but just aren't able to, and we try to knock all those barriers out. A couple different ways we've done that is by, we've got vans that we go from Bolingbrook, Romeoville, pick up any kid who's in need of a ride. A lot of our students' parents either are working night shifts on their second shift, or they have other siblings at home and their parents aren't able to get them two different programs they want to get into, and so we get that barrier out of the way and offer free transportation to the students. Also, our programs are at no cost to the students, a majority of our programs are at no cost. Only time we ever do have a cost is when it's a field trip or overnight kind of retreat, and even some of those are at no cost to students as we work with scholarships and work into our community to find support for those kids who aren't able to pay for it. Ken also mentioned as part of the ATS Committee that we've been meeting for the last couple semesters, and we've been with the ATS program since the beginning. We've been offering our support in the school district with our support groups for the students. So this helps with the one-to-ten-day suspensions that kids are facing. We just didn't want to see these kids missing school, falling farther behind in their studies, and just kind of getting that label or that reputation for being a bad student. So by allowing them to stay in their classes and working with us after school, we can talk about those struggles that they might be having, also kind of address some of those deeper underlying issues that might be going on, and just to build that relationship with them. A lot of the kids coming in have never talked to an adult in this kind of way before, and just to kind of see those barriers broken down. We offer this Mondays after school, we've been in both Romeoville and Bolingbrook High School with this program. A program very similar is our real-life support groups. This happens on Tuesday night in the Bolingbrook Community Center. This is just a safe place for teens to come who are struggling through just relationship issues, if it's school issues, family, breaking down, all kinds of things are open topic for the kids to come into. Every night, we remind the kids that they're not alone in what they're going through, that they've got support, that there's other people who are struggling as well and want to be there for them. We also remind them that they're cared about without strings attached, that we're not there to judge them, that we're going to be there to support them, and whatever they're going through, whatever's been done in the past, that we're there for them. And thirdly, we remind them that they're lovable, capable, and worthwhile, so that every kid who's walking out of that place realizes that those three things are true about them. Wednesdays is our Good Clean Fun activities. Every Wednesday, there's something different, something fun for the kids to do after school. They walk over to our program, it can be arts and crafts, sports activities, cooking classes, field trips, and we offer them a snack for that long walk over from the high school so that they can be feeling good during those activities. We get those snacks provided by the DuPage Township Food Pantry each Wednesday. Going Deeper is our Thursday night character development course. Kids come here, it's lessons, games, skits, discussions, small group interactions. games, skits, discussions, small group, small group interactions. We do all of this planning based on our 40 developmental assets. You'll find in the folders that I handed out to you that we plan our curriculum based on what Search Institute's finding. Search Institute, for those of you who are unfamiliar, is an organization that's been around for 50-plus years. They've been researching young people and finding different things that are making these kids successful, and those things that are causing kids to fail. And they found that 20 internal, 20 external assets, the more of these a kid has in their life, the more successful they're going to be in the end, the better they're going to feel about themselves, the better they're going to be at reaching their goals and their dreams. And so, we've taken what 40, what Search Institute's came up with, with these 40 assets, and we've instilled this into our curriculum, and we teach from this each Thursday night. We also included a sample lesson plan in your, in your packets, so you can kind of see some, some of the ways that we're teaching the kids. These can be anything from conflict resolution, building self-esteem, goal setting, stuff like that. We do a survey each year at the beginning of the year to find out what kids are really struggling with at the moment. This year, we found that kids are struggling with lack of poor use of time. They're just not using their time very well. Also, found that lack self-esteem. These kids aren't feeling confident about themselves, and also with their school involvement. And so, these are three big ways that we're trying to reach the kids this year with our teaching. And so, we want you to know that what we're working with the kids on is stuff that we're finding is needed with them. All right, our service projects, every early release Wednesday each month, we do a service project called You Got Served. We go into the community, help the kids realize that they can give back to their community, that they can, that they're important to this world, and that they have meaningful things to offer. So, You Got Served service projects happen, like I said, the early release Wednesdays, any kids welcome to come. If they're looking for community service hours, this is a time that they can fill those, or if they're just looking at a way to give back. We give them a variety of options from Feed My Starving Children to work during Christmas carols during December in the nursing homes in the Bolingbrook and Romeoville area. We've done gardening projects for elderly family members in the area who aren't able to get out and do yard work, like rake leaf, leaf raking and mowing their lawn, to animals, to helping the animals in the shelters, and just cleaning cages and helping in that way. So, we're giving these kids a variety of ways to look at volunteering and seeing where their interests might lie. All right, so those are our main programs. We also offer mentoring. So, as you see, our week's pretty packed. We also offer mentoring throughout the week. So, if a student, just during one of those programs, is just sharing struggles that they're going through, and during a big group, it's not appropriate necessarily to talk about those, or they don't feel comfortable in that setting. We offer one-to-one mentoring with highly trained mentors that we have brought in from the community, from our business friends down the hall at the Chamber, and from just people who are in the church community looking to give back to the kids. So, we've trained these mentors to work with our kids, to help them when they're struggling through relationship issues, if they're just not feeling comfortable at school, you name it. Those mentors are trained and ready to help those kids. A new program we added last year was our Snack Track and Tutor. This came from seeing a lot of the kids coming into our program, getting to finals, and then trying to catch up and do well in their finals. And we were thinking, well, if they're waiting until now to really get this, you know, moving, we need to be tracking them earlier on. So, we set this up with our partnership with Lewis University, with retired teachers that we had willing to volunteer in our organization, as well as business leaders who wanted to spend time with these kids and help them succeed at school. So, this is a program we're offering, and thanks to a couple of different grants for computer lab and tablets, we're able to stay on the edge of technology as far as what you guys are using in your class, in the classrooms to work with these kids. So, a few other things. We have overnight retreats, trips that these kids are welcome to come on. We've done stuff like a Boys to Men Summer Trip out in eastern Illinois, or I'm sorry, western Illinois. We also did a Starve Rock Camping Trip. A lot of these kids have never camped outside overnight, and that was comical and entertaining and a really good time for these kids to experience. We also do a winter retreat every year. This is camping in cabins, so we're not tent camping for that one, but just opportunities for kids to leave their environment and just be with others, and build those relationships with the adults that we have in their lives. We also do special events. Many of you probably are aware of the three-on-three basketball tournament we do every year. We've been doing this for the last three years with the kids who aren't necessarily making basketball teams, whether it be for their high school, or with the Park District, who really just want to play the sport for the love. We put mentors in as coaches and work with them on their skills, but also with building their character up. We're in the Romeoville and Bolingbrook parades. We do summer camps with the kids so that in the summer, when they're not so busy, we're keeping them busy and doing something that's safe and fun for themselves. We also do a cultural Thanksgiving dinner. This is a very diverse community, and we like to celebrate that. And so, each year for Thanksgiving, we have the kids represent their cultural background by bringing a dish of food to pass for a potluck, and kind of gives them that pride of where they're coming from and getting to know their family. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for this community, like I mentioned earlier, and I just wanted to list a few of the community members we've worked with, but definitely way more than this. These are people who come in to speak to our kids during our Thursday night lessons, also people who open up their businesses for our kids to come into and learn more about. I included some calendars in your, in your folders. This is for you to kind of see that we've got stuff going on all the time, and we tell the kids, you can come to as much or as little as you want. A lot of our kids come to everything because they're looking for a group like this. They call it their second home. There's some kids who only are looking for a support group, so they'll only be there on Tuesdays. But, we offer all of these programs to every kid in the Valley View School District, as well as opening it up to high school students outside who are looking for a support system as well. Thanks so much for letting me share, and I went through that really quick. That was just a rough overview of what H2O has. I'd love to talk to you more. This is what, like Ken said, I've been doing for eight years. It's my passion. I love these kids. I love this community, and I'd love to tell you some of the success stories that I've seen, and just what I'm seeing as far as what the youth are exhibiting. So, thank you so much again for letting us speak. And if anybody out in the audience would like to know more, we have flyers, so Colleen can give you some.
Thank you, Ryan. Before you step down, they've done such a great job. I have gone, it's been several years, but I've gone to one of their mentoring, not mentoring, but one of the group deals on a Thursday night, I believe it was, back then, I don't know. It really is interesting to hear some of the stories, and what you talk about, and, you know, not everybody comes from a great family situation, or sometimes it's not as good as we would think it is. And you might be surprised at some of the children that you might see there, and you guys do a great job with that. They also, like, and this is a thing I have to take umbrage with, I'm sorry, but at the three-on-three tournament, they have a chili cook-off. I'm a little disappointed, you know, I got honorable mention last time, because I was the only guy with white chicken chili.
But Mr. Felice won, I believe.
Yes, and Mr. Felice took a whole cheerleading group with him to sell his chili. Anyway, you guys do an outstanding job. And if, if you want to introduce the rest of the people that are here from the board, come up, just stand up here so people can see on TV. Just, Pat Clare's here, former Assistant Principal, obviously the wife of the mayor, Maria Zarate. Step up here, just introduce everybody so that people know.
Yeah, sure.
This, this organization, I mean, there's three people up here that are part of this organization. I mean, it's, it's been a very, very successful program, and it's growing, and there's obviously a need for it. So, I want to thank you. So, go ahead and introduce your board.
Yeah, so this is our Executive Director, Pat Clare. This is our Youth Outreach Specialist, Colleen Heitlich. Our Board Member, Michelle Boschnick. Another Board Member, Maria Zarate. And then you saw, I guess Ken doesn't want to be on TV again.
And just for the community's information, Ms. Clare does not take a check for this.
She does this fully volunteering while she's going to school to get her doctorate. So, thank you, Pat, and thank you, Ryan. And if anybody's got any questions?
Ryan, you said you were coming to brag, and I think you were modest in your bragging. So, you have to work on your bragging. I, I think that what you guys have done at H2O is identify needs in our community and address them, many of which that weren't getting met. So, we appreciate that. In addition to that, you have addressed needs that we've said, hey, we could use some help with. Things like our ATS program, which lower the recidivism rate of our students that offend in a much better, in a much better way and more effectively than traditional suspensions and those things work. We've asked you to reach out into Romeoville, and you have. So, we really appreciate all the things that you identify, and then the ways you support us, and the things that we ask you guys to do. So, thank you very much, Eastwood.
You're very welcome.
I'd like to just echo a few things. I've had the, the honor of being a part of this organization long before I was even approached and looked at being a member of the Board of Directors with Hart Haven Outreach. They are effectively helping make a change with many students, which ultimately affects the change of atmosphere in our schools. They need help, and volunteers, whatever the case may be, but you're seeing, there's Ryan, there's three people up there that really do the brunt, if not all of the work. So, they're asking for help, and sometimes they're too shy, but they need volunteers. And, and everybody has heard of H2O, but not many people know, and this is a broad brush explanation of what H2O does. There is just so much more. So, contact them, take a look at the schedule. They are effectively helping make a change in our schools, and our hats should be off. And thanking them just is not enough. We need to take action and help that way, because words just aren't going to do it. So, thank you guys for everything that you guys are doing.
Thanks, Dana. If I could say something to what he said, we are looking for people to help out. The Search Institute, which I mentioned earlier, finds that every student should have five positive adults in their life. That's somebody who, you know, in the grocery store can say, say their name, hello, greet them. Being in their first basketball game and seeing a crowd of fans cheering for them, that kind of thing is huge for a high school student. And so, those are little things that everyone in this community can do, and that's stuff that we're trying to do as far as building our volunteer base and introducing these kids to people in the community, so that when they're at those places, they're recognized.
I want to commit my dedication, and hopefully my fellow board members will agree with me, the resources that we have to help you guys with through the school system. Of course, you guys have access, but you, you know, whatever we can do to help, thank you. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Great job, Ryan.
May I make one comment?
Any other audience?
May I, may I make one comment concerning H2O?
Pardon me?
One comment concerning H2O. Lawrence has been part of our Alternative to Suspension Committee that we started last year in our attempts to beef up our, our therapeutic support systems, or alternative to suspension systems. And we recognized, I know intimately what H2O does, when, at Bolingbrook High School, was able to witness some of the supports that they gave our kids who were suffering from some difficulties, whether they be academic or, or social or emotional. So, I'm very keenly aware of, in detail, what H2O does for our children. During our, during our committee meeting, it became pretty clear that ways in which the district can, can proactively improve supporting some of our children is to be able to identify risk factors before they get involved in, in malfeasance behaviors, or have some social, emotional difficulties, or academic difficulties. If we're able to, again, identify those kids through risk factors, and then connect them to support groups within our community. Prior to those risk factors manifesting themselves in, in, in negative consequences at school, we see a significant role that H2O can play in that. As you know, we have other partnerships with community organizations that we support in our attempts to, again, support our children proactively. And so, I will be bringing to the board at the next board meeting an information item to further our support of H2O and enter into a more formal agreement with them, because they have volunteered their services for us at a significant financial cost. And I see significant benefit in partnering with H2O as a means of supporting our kids both proactively, as well as reacting to issues of concern as a means of keeping them in school, while at the same time addressing behaviors at their root.
Thank you. And again, thank you all. Is there anybody else from the audience who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none, moving down the list. Ms. Hawke, Student Due Process, or I'm sorry, Mr. Dr. Mitchum.
Go ahead, Rachel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I jumped the gun there a little bit.
Okay, Mr. President, I would ask that the board approve of Student Due Process cases A through M as presented.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
No.
Member Sakura?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Ms. Kinder?
Yes, sir.
Field trips.
Yes. Action Report 10.1. We're seeking your approval on this board policy 6240, field trips. And this was presented previously for first reading.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion?
Some, just a little bit. I still, this is a good time to bring this up. I think that with our busing needs and our transportation needs, a parent brought this up, and I think it's a really valid concern. And I know that Gary and Assistant Superintendent Grzafi and Mr. Richards are working on this, but I, I would think we as a board want this to be a priority. When our kids go on field trips that are longer than the school day, that get out after a time in which that bus is needed, we outsource that busing of the kids on that bus. I want to make sure that we have a commitment to working really hard to make sure that all the companies that we outsource, outsource to have the same standards that we have for bus safety, whether that's with drivers or seat belts. Because the complaint from the parent was, there was no seat belts on the bus, and why do we have seat belts on a bus for a three-mile ride, and not a bus, seat belts on a bus for a 30-mile ride? I thought that was a legitimate point. So, let's make sure that, and I know that can be difficult. We've been working with First Student on the way that they do background checks and some of that information, but I think we need to firm that up.
We have motion seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sakura?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Ms. Kinder.
Okay, Action Report 10.2 is the application for recognition of public schools. We're required to submit this to the school board for approval on a yearly basis, and then submit this to the Illinois State Board of Education. It requires that each school verifies that they are in compliance with state mandates. All of our schools are in compliance, and we have attached the applications from each school for your review, and we are seeking this approval.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sakura?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next up, we will be adjourning to a public hearing for the budget. Gary will make a brief presentation of the budget that's previously been read, and at this time, I would seek a motion from one of the board members to adjourn to a public session. Public hearing, and second?
Second.
Motion and seconded.
Can I do a roll call? Yeah.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sakura?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Mr. Grzafi, if you would, please.
Very good. The draft that you're going to see this evening is contained in your packet. There are a few additional slides, but I would say for the vast majority of the slides, they're exactly what's contained in the packet. The changes for the 1415 budget, our overall budget just shy of $250 million. That includes a $35 million on behalf payment. That is the payment that the state makes on behalf of all of the certified staff within Valley View. That money, again, doesn't flow to us in any direct fashion. It's just a book entry only, but we are required to account for it. And so, I think it's important to note that it does inflate our budget by $35 million, taking us all the way up to that 250 mark. Operational funds, that would be everything other than debt service, $225 million. It's an increase of $5 million over FY14, or a little over 2%. In terms of our revenue, we've got just under $180 million in local resources, property taxes, student fees, and corporate personal property replacement tax are three primary resources, funding loc, coming from local resources. State funding, $48 million. I'll have a slide in a little bit here that kind of break- We've got additional ERO costs for certified staff. For the first time, we are being required to pay tuition for students attending Lincoln. We've got a reduction in our tuition for outside placement students by approximately a million dollars, but we did add some additional staff in-house to account for those students being brought back in-house. We did increase the guest teacher rate. We've had a difficult time in filling our absences, whether they be for sickness or personal reasons or professional development. And so, looking at surrounding districts, we felt we needed to remain competitive. That's an area, several years ago, when we went through a round of budget reductions, we made some pretty significant reductions in the rate there. And so, we felt we needed to bring that back up to par. Expenses related to the administration of the PARC assessment, this is exclusive of the technology that was previously approved. This involves proctoring, which is required, as well as the cost of paying for the test itself, as well as some infrastructure needs at about a handful of our buildings. And we do have about a million and 1/2, we do have a million and 1/2 dollars increase in our debt service payment. I think it's important to note that we are coming up on the end of our refinancing that we undertook about five years ago. And so, that's something we're going to want to look at here in short order to kind of minimize the spiking, if you will, potentially, that debt service could incur without looking at, again, some refinancing.
Mr. Grisafi, briefly, just for the community, guest teachers or substitute teachers, they might be. Confuse on that. And you said in those numbers, it does not include the debt service in the top line numbers?
Correct.
How much is debt service this year?
We're at $25.3 million.
Can you briefly explain what debt service is?
Sure. That would be the annual payment, mortgage payment, if you will, that would, is required to pay off all of the bonds that have been approved and sold over the many years to build and/or remodel and renovate all of our buildings throughout the district. None of those funds have gone to pay salaries or benefits. Really, it has all gone into bricks and mortar, so to speak.
And the vast majority of those funds were through voter approved?
Correct.
Referendums?
Correct. Budget revision, since the budget was put on display in August, we've added a bilingual kindergarten teacher, a one-to-one classified nurse, a one-to-one aide. And those needs come to us as students enroll late. The needs are unknown at the time of staffing or the time the budget is built. And so, as those needs become known, we have a lot of discussion and find, discuss, you know, are there alternatives to servicing those needs of specific students? And obviously, you know, the need is there to add those staffs. $10,000 for 88 accommodations that are becoming known as the teachers returned back to work. We've added $1.7 million in technology lease proceeds, which were received in FY14 but carried over to FY15. That's important to note because that's the first time where we've actually carried over proceeds from one fiscal year to another. And so, the auditor's actually basically said, this is something you need to do because those monies are in your coffers, but they are restricted. They need to be used for those intended purposes, and so, you need to add those expenses, but there's obviously no offsetting revenue, similar to a bond issuance where you would see proceeds in one year and you might use them over a couple, three years. We transferred, we're going to transfer $1.7 million from the Transportation Fund to the Education Fund due to a need in the Education Fund and a lack thereof in the Transportation Fund. We found out after the budget was initially proposed that state breakfast and lunch revenue rates are being decreased, about a $42,000 reduction there. Another auditor recommendation, reclassifying our bus lease payment from capital outlay to purchase services. Again, no increase there, just moving it from one object area to another. And addition of $432,000 in general state aid per final computations. That should be our final estimate there.
Off the top of your head, do you know what our per capita general state aid is? Not, you know what I mean, the state mandate, $6,500 or whatever their number is?
6119 is the foundation level.
What do we actually get? It's around 1,200?
If you take the $30,497 there at the bottom and divide that by our 17,300 students, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay, we can do that.
That'll give you a real good sense of $30,497 divided by...
Twenty students, 17, it's like 17,8 something?
Seventy-three. Seventeen-three?
Seventeen-three.
Seventeen-hundred?
Seventeen thousand, three hundred.
That doesn't sound right.
Is that what you said?
Thirty million, 497.
No, no, it's the number of students.
Seventeen thousand, three hundred?
Seventeen thousand, three hundred, yeah.
Seventeen hundred, $62. There's a general belief by the public, because the State General Assembly says this all the time, that the general state aid formula is $6,500 per student. That's the foundation level by which if your district can't find a way to fund that, they will give you $6,500. So, if you're a relatively poor farm district downstate, they will give you $6,500 per pupil. We don't get $6,500 per pupil. We get 17, and it's been lower than that, but not much lower than that, but it's been...
We have been climbing the last few years, A, because of the decrease in our property values, and the other big factor is the addition of full-day kindergarten in our district, which has caused us...
There's some reasons that we picked up some money, but going to all-day kindergarten was probably the biggest, more than anything, I would think, because we enrolled 1,100.
We added 600, 600 students, 1,300 halftime students.
Added, 1,300, yeah, exactly. So, but anyway, I just want to point that out for the, when you hear that number, if you hear politicians talking about, you know, oh, we give $6,500 per, not in this district.
Thank you, Gary. Just to give you the idea of source of revenue, something you're familiar with over the years, receive about 65% of our revenue from local resources, $180 million. But again, if we layer in that $35 million on behalf payment, it looks like the state's picking up 30%. And I argue that, again, it's not something I ever get to see, feel, hear, or touch. Backing that out raises or increases our local, our local share to 74% or 180 million, but it drops the state percentage to 20%. And so, again, that's what the state kicks in annually to fund our district. This is our total revenue stream, and Fed kicks in about 6%, state's kicking in 20%. And so, when you hear that the state of Illinois is 48 out of 50 in the nation in terms of state contributions to education, this certainly would prove that point as it relates to our Talking about general state aid, to give you a general, a general sense of where we've been over the last 10 or so years, I've got, next slide will give you an idea of how the proration has affected us, but you can see that we've, we're kind of up and down. We were increasing then decreasing. We've had some really nice increases these last two years. But for 1415, the formula should have generated $34 million, but because of the 89% proration, we're not receiving $3.7 million. And so, that is kind of illustrated here over the last four years, when the economy really started affecting state coffers, we have received 95% of what we should receive in 1112 and then 89% the last three years. And so, this is the money that has been lost due to proration over the four years for a total tidy sum of $10 million that we've not received.
Gary, there is a bill, I know you're aware, but for the community?
I've got some slides in the back.
Excellent.
So, yeah, appreciate that. We're also being prorated in transportation, regular vocational amounts to about $1,200 per year. And so, over the last five years, we've not received $6 million that we had been receiving prior to that. And so, you had just transportation and general state aid, that's $16 million that the district has not received since 10/11 that had received continually in years prior. And so, this is a large part of why we continue to use our balances to maintain services and not make the reductions that would certainly affect the level of services that most folks would come to expect. This gives you a general idea of what our budget's comprised of. We've got all the funds up here in the different objects, salary benefits, purchase services, and so on. And then, our largest fund, the Education Fund, which is $181 million of the 249 million. And so, as has been typical, we've got about 85% of the education budget wrapped up in salary and benefits. And so, that leaves 15% to pay for things like outside tuition, supplies, things of that nature. And that's been pretty typical for us over the years. Nothing very remarkable there. We've got some audit adjustments that have caused us to reclassify different objects. So, that's why some of those percentages might seem higher than they have been in the This is the executive summary that I like to present to you, the board and the community. It just gives the operational funds, the Education Fund, Operations and Maintenance Fund, Transportation Education Fund is where all the salaries for teachers and all related personnel, having everything to do with the daily education of students in our buildings, principals, support staff, everybody would be allocated in here. Operations and Maintenance would be your buildings, your gas, water, electric. Transportation, pretty self-explanatory there. IMRF, Social Security, Medicare, those are the required contributions for those specific pension and retirement obligations. Our TORC Fund is our unemployment and workers' comp, along with our general liability insurance. And working cash is kind of our cash checkbook. And so, if you add those across, we're starting the year with about $61 million of fund balance. That's what's in our coffers. We're going to take in $218 million, but we're going to spend $225 million across those funds, leaving us with about a $6.6 million deficit or 88 days of operating reserve, which is a little less than what I'd like to be at. As I've mentioned in the past, 90 days is about my minimum comfort zone. But I think it's important to mention, as I have for every year I've been here, this is a worst-case scenario budget. This would mean every budget line item being spent down to zero, which, again, is something that never happens. We've typically always ended the year in a better position than what I present. But again, we don't know which lines are going to, are not going to be spent, so we just put it all in there in the kitchen sink, so to speak, and knowing that, you know, again, it is a worst-case scenario. So, again, we're hanging in there. If we can get state to turn itself around, and I don't know what that's going to take, but we should know in November.
Last year, days on hand, it's better this year, isn't it?
We ended the year better than we thought we would, but I think, if I just looked at this, I think we were just at about 90.
Okay.
So, you know, two days isn't going to make a difference, but it is something that Director Finance, Joanne and I, keeps us up at night.
I'm trying not to look at it right now because I know, where are we at the start of the year? I know we always measure it two ways, so we look to be 90, and is it 180? I can't remember where we try to be at the...
Well, again, we're starting the year at $61 million, so that's where we, you know, that includes the June taxes. We really need to flashback to May. What do we look like in May before we hit that low threshold point? And so, this is a June 30 finish, the 88 days are 54 million. I don't know what our June collections are, Joanne, 30 million, 35 million?
Fifty.
Fifty. You know, again, it's when the payrolls hit as well in June. And so, our expenses aren't truly the 1/12th of what you're seeing here because of the way we cut our checks in June but pay them out over the summer. And that's that low point graph that you're referring to.
Where is the back payment to, at Venice Hospital in here?
I had that slide last year. I did not put it this year. We are three more years in at $1,300,000 a year that's being withheld from our tax distributions to help offset that. And that's something that the Finance Committee is going to have to discuss in terms of a deficiency levy, if that's something that we want to entertain as we do it.
Where are you showing that now, which?
It's not on this slide in particular. I don't have it, I don't have a slide, but it is accounted for in our tax collections and our overall revenue. It would be accounted for.
So, I'm saying when you have the, I'm saying, when you have the money coming in, does that reflect?
It does.
The 1.3, because it's not so much that we're writing it to us, that the county's not giving it to us?
Correct. It's withholding it and giving it directly to Venice.
So, Mr. Grisafi, if you can give me two numbers. So, if, what is our operating cost for 2014 and 2015, and what, how much revenue are we bringing in? Is there a, because I'm looking at a $36 million deficit. Is that from what we bring in to what we're paying out? And we're using $36 million from our savings?
No. This slide will address exactly your question. We're taking in operationally $218 million, and we're going to spend $225 for a difference of 6.7.
So, where was the $270 million in the first, in the first couple of...
That's what debt service total operating.
With the debt service, but that's still a cost to the district, right?
It would be, but that's revenue, that's revenue neutral, revenue expenditure neutral. We're going to take in 25 and spend 25.
Okay.
I mean, there's really no sense in even accounting for it. To me, this is really what drives us day to day. Those payments are twice a year. We make our principal payment, and we make a principal and interest payment.
So, it's 6 million?
6.6, again, worst-case scenario.
Can you explain, I think sometimes there's a disconnect because the total budget, I think you said was going up 2% to?
2.2.
2.2%. So, I think people in their minds are like, hey, you know, the district has a 2.2% increase. But then, there's a large other number out there, which is the debt service number, which is from the voter approved, as you described earlier, to build new high schools, middle schools, all the things that we've done over the years.
And you're familiar with that because oftentimes, that's my reply when we get taxpayers who ask about, you know, what's going on with the tax bills. And our operational portion of our levy, which is the one thing we do have control over, goes up by very minimal. I mean, it's 1.5 to 2.1 or something. We would layer in debt service, sometimes that brings it up maybe a full percentage. And so, again, what the question is...
I just think our community doesn't fully understand. I was hoping you could explain debt service in relationship to our tax rate cap in reference to cost of living, you know, what we're allowed. So, what we're allowed is cost of living or 5%, right, whichever's lower.
Sure.
Then in addition, there's debt service. I think that is worth people having a fuller understanding of every year.
So, when we present the tax levy in November, the tax cap law that's been around since '91, I believe, limits the amount a district can receive to 5% or the CPI, Consumer Price Index, whichever is less. That is exclusive of debt service. And so, if the community has approved bonds to build new schools, renovate schools, what have you, and those bonds are obviously approved and sold, those, whatever that bond schedule looks like, and again, I liken it to a mortgage, whatever...
Adjustable, though, not fixed.
Typically, it is adjustable, right, right. And again, when the, when the bonds were sold to build new schools in the community, the idea was that, you know, we're going to grow, and so, let's kind of push it out a little bit so that the newcomers into the communities would help service that debt. And so, again, our payment last year was about $23.2 million. Now, we're going to go to $25 million, 1.5 million increase over last year. You know, what is that, one and 1/2 million over 23?
Yeah, so...
I mean, that's, is that 5%?
Not even.
I mean, that's greater than 2.2, and I think that's the point you're trying to make, is that the debt service would increase more than the operational levy. And again, I don't know if I did a good job explaining it. It has more to do with the levy than it does the budget, but it is integrated into the budget. And so, back to your question on Venice, that is accounted for in our tax collections. Next slide, 10-year fund balance history, just giving you an idea that we do continue to see our balances decline. We had a big decrease from 12 to 13 due primarily to the construction of full-day kindergarten at 10 of our buildings and renovating the other two. And so, again, here's the $61 million that's unaudited that we ended our last fiscal year with. And so, again, it bears watching. We really do not want to see ourselves go down much below that point. And again, it has more to do with the way our cash flow works. The analogy I use is we are paid twice a year. If you received your annual salary twice a year in June and September, would you be able to survive from September all the way back to May before you got your next paycheck in June? And so, it's important for the district to monitor its cash reserves to meet its obligations as we progress through the year.
So, Gary, you said...
And so, again, it bears watching. We really do not want to see ourselves go down much below that point. And again, it has more to do with the way our cash flow works. The analogy I use is, we are paid twice a year. If you received your annual salary twice a year in June and September, would you be able to survive from September all the way back to May before you got your next paycheck in June? And so, it's important for the district to monitor its cash reserves to meet its obligations as we progress through the year.
So, Gary, you said it's it. We should not go beneath that number. And this may sound like a rhetorical question. It's almost going to sound silly to ask it. How do we do that, though? Not spend?
I think if we see ourselves dipping much below the 90 days, Leo, we're going to have to look at budget reductions. We are going to have to make some budget reductions. We have weathered a battery of storms between the Adventist refund, the proration by the state in both transportation and general state aid. We just...
So, at what point do we do that? At what point are we looking at that? Is this... Is it 90 days, six months into the year, four months, three months? When do we know that we have to start looking at this?
I guess it's also philosophical.
How far do you want to go?
Yeah, we can go the route of nearby district to our west. I think they're named Plainfield. They went to tax anticipation warrants for several years, where they didn't have enough money to cover. They've pulled themselves out of that hole now, and I don't think that... Right now, currently, we make money by loaning money to districts that need that. And so, I guess it's philosophical. We can pick a hard number before that to stop. But I think, once you get to that number, which I think for us is 50 some days, 60 days, somewhere in that range?
Right. I think that the low-point balance that you're referring to, about $15 million, which means we don't have enough money in the bank in May to make payroll and to pay our vendors, where we're looking for a short-term TAW, tax anticipation warrant, until such time as the June tax collections are received, distributed and received. And so, that's, again, that's something that we're monitoring certainly closely, you know, as we approach that May deadline, to say, are we going to be able to make payroll? The next couple of slides might help the situation. And so, Rick, you had referred to Senate Bill 16. And so, this is a bill that's passed the Senate in the last session, creates a single funding formula that provides equitable means to distribute education funds to Illinois districts. The general state aid formula has not received any revisions probably in 25 years. And if you can point to anything that hasn't received any changes in 25 years in education, I'd be very surprised. It does prioritize resources to help districts where there's a greater student need. And we know what our population needs are, provides transparency in how funds are spent at the school level. As I mentioned, it passed the Senate in May of 2014, and it's currently under review by the House of Representatives, and most likely will receive at least some attention in the November session of the General Assembly. And so, the State Board of Ed has modeled this for the legislators to help them in casting their votes. They will be updating this as soon as the FY14 data becomes available. This bill has a lot of moving pieces, and it's taken a lot of people by surprise. I'm not sure everybody understands it exactly, other than maybe the wonks down in Springfield. But in doing my best, in talking with them, as well as colleagues, we stand potentially... And I won't go through all the specifics, but I certainly would be able to do that offline. If this bill were to pass, we could receive as much as $8.5 million of additional funding.
A year.
A year. And this is a Robin Hood bill. This is Robin Peter to pay Paul. And so, Rick, you're familiar with the analogy. I know you are, Dr. Mitchum. Our neighbors to the north, Naperville 203, receives $80 million more in property taxes a year than we do.
Wait, hold on. Let's just... I want everybody to get this. The same... The school district has the same number of buildings, roughly the same number of children, and they receive $80 million more a year. So, think about our budget before. It was $225 million. $80 million more every year they get to educate the same number of kids.
A difference of 57 children.
A difference of 57 kids.
I did a three-year study, looking at the data of revenue expenditures and enrollment. And, yeah, they're within... They're winning less than 50 kids each of the average three, or average. They collect $80 million more in property taxes, but they do take in less in state aid and in federal money. Even offsetting that, they still receive $30 million in additional revenue, local, state, and federal than we do. This bill hurts them to the tune of about $9 million. And so, even if we were to take in eight and a half more, and they get $9 million less, there's still a $20 million disparity between an exact similar-sized district, same number of kids, same number of schools. And arguably, we have a higher need population than Naperville 203 does. And so, again, very simple analogy, very rudimentary in terms of two districts, but you can see what this bill is really trying to address. And so, the large unit districts are typically on the winning end of this. The County of DuPage, I've seen a number as a county, they stand to lose $150 million collectively.
So, let me put that in. What does $20 million mean to us? $20 million to us is 360 teachers. Think about that. 360 teachers. That's what $20 million will pay for.
I mean, this would... I don't want to... This would be the answer to our issues. And Mr. Venegas, to your question, I mean, we would have a balanced budget with a bit of a surplus that we haven't had in many years, being able to do some things that we would like to do, that we just have not been able to bring forward.
And this is where our community, the AFT, our teachers' union, everyone in our district needs to pull together, contact your local state rep, and ask them to support this bill. The other districts are doing... The ones that are potentially losing money are doing the same thing and asking them not to support this bill.
And don't assume that it's an easy vote for them, because they don't just represent Valley View. They also represent districts that may lose money. So, when you contact your local state reps, you will have that... They will have that... They're aware of what's going on with this.
But to our AFT partners, your three largest school districts in the local gain money, us, Joliet, and Aurora. And they gain more money. Those other two districts gain more than we do. We really need our AFT, our teachers, and those represented by the AFT to get behind this.
This is really a question of equity and education, being able to fund districts more equitably, so that we can kind of match our rhetoric with a commitment to ensure that all of our kids are funded more equitably. Gary and I are part of a large coalition. Myself and another superintendent have co-offered a letter that we're going to post to the website, distribute to the board, send to all alluded district superintendents, and we will identify those districts around the state who stand to gain from this, and we will send that letter to them as well. It's sitting on my desk now. Gary just wordsmithed it a little bit. We'll put our numbers in there, but we're going to make a very concerted effort to try to ensure that this is passed by the House. It's incumbent upon all of our constituents to call their state reps and indicate to them their support for this. I am fully behind this, as I indicated, and have co-offered this letter. There is also, as a result of this coalition, another groundswell of superintendents and state representatives who are coalescing to fight against this bill, because they perceive themselves as losers in this equation, even though still, as Gary indicated, there would still be a $20 million difference in revenue between our district to the north and us even after, if this bill were to pass and it did provide a little more equity to the services we can provide for our students.
One of our state senators is Jennifer Brant Torino, and she voted yes for this when it was in the Senate. She was former Will County Regional Superintendent, and she told me that the school district her children are in get less money because of this bill. But it was the right thing to do, to bring more equity throughout the state. So, it's a difficult vote for her, because the school districts she represented were getting less, our school district was getting more. But Senator Maguire also found himself in a similar situation and voted yes, because they all say it's the right thing to do.
And it should be noted, when this first came out, we have a group in Springfield that represents us, and myself, and Rick, and Gary, and Jim went over these numbers, because we first... At first blush, it looked like we were going to lose three or four million, and then we found out the other way around, and partly because one of the guys that works at JRR was integral in helping craft language to this years ago, similar to this several years ago. And he said, no, 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 I don't believe you guys are losing. And we picked the thing apart, and then finally, we probably went back and forth, five or six phone calls. Are you sure? Are you sure? Are you sure? And then finally, we came up with the yes, we are.
Yeah, this column here...
This is, I think, it's kind of vetted itself out over time, too. When this thing first got legs in the Senate and took off, everybody thought this was going to be a part of a bigger education funding reform, and it didn't necessarily turn out that way. You know, the brakes got thrown on it as soon as it got out of the Senate, and that's why we're doing this, you know, the summer discussions, as they call them.
Members Sikora and I have met with the union leadership and approached the subject already with them, so they are obviously aware.
When is it going up for vote? Do we know?
Who knows? I mean, it's just a matter of... There will be... That number, 8.4 million or 4.8 million, whatever that number is, that won't be the number. I'm just guessing.
I think that's a very good guess.
There will be a compromise somewhere.
That's a very good guess. You heard Dr. Mitchum mention equity. The one thing that this bill does not really resolve or address is adequacy. It doesn't put any more money in the bucket. All it does is slice the bucket in a different way. And so, you know, if you just take out prorations, you know, I talked about state, general state aid, and transportation. If you didn't... If none of those were prorated, the bill only gives us 4.8. I used to make it sound like it's nothing, $4.8 million more. And so, you know, it looks like we're receiving... We are receiving more money, but it's based on prorated numbers. If the state would fully fund what it should be committed to doing...
It covers that number.
It's a much smaller number. And so, what's strange about this is, if the state were to say, we're not going to prorate general state aid, and we're not going to prorate transportation, our number goes down, but the loser's number gets bigger. And so, it's an inverse relationship, and I don't know if people fully understand that, but, again, it doesn't address adequacy. It doesn't put any more money in the bucket. And so, you know, it's been 25 years, as I mentioned. This is going to be... If this goes in some form, and again, Steve, I think you're absolutely right, that will not be the final number, it's probably a good another 25 years before we see another revision.
I hear adequacy, and I get that, but I can't get away from equality in the sense that 57 more kids gets $20 million more. Just will never, ever make sense to me.
Right, absolutely. And, you know, Gary, also, it's time, and has been time for a long time, that the state of Illinois make whatever choice it is. You know, they passed an income tax increase of 2 percent or to 5 percent, and it's for short term. Okay, fine. They have to make a decision. They passed a half-year budget, so on January 1st, if they don't take action between now and then, that is going to be a two or three... I don't even know what the number is. Two and a half billion-dollar hole in the state deficit. It is time for the state of Illinois to honor its constitutional obligation and fund a preponderance of education in the state of Illinois. They have passed the buck year after year, decade after decade, and we are number 48 out of 50, and I don't know who the bottom two are, but it's ridiculous. And it's time that they take the hard vote, do what they have to do, and, you know, and get the burden off the back of property taxes, and put it on for the equitable purchases and so on and so forth across the board. They have got to do something, and it's just come to a head to the point that they have to do something, and they have to do it, I would say, within the next six months. So, that's my rant for the day.
Are there any other questions on the budget?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? This is a hearing. If you have any questions, please step forward, state your name. Hearing none, seeing none. A motion to adjourn the question-and-answer session. Motion to approve the budget as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, what did you just do? Because you said two different things, and I sound like it was two different motions. So, what is the motion on the floor?
Motion on the floor is to approve the budget. We adjourned the public hearing portion of the session. We're now going to approve the budget.
We did a motion to go into it, so we're not doing a motion to come out?
I believe that we should adjourn the public hearing.
I thought we did.
We did do it with a motion, and a motion and second, and a vote. I did not vote.
A motion to approve... Okay, I got you. We skipped one step. Motion to approve the public hearing.
So moved.
We already did it. We have a motion and a second. Let's go back. Roll call vote to adjourn the public hearing.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Now, we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget as presented.
So moved.
And there was a second by Secretary Campbell. Roll call vote, please, if there's no further discussion.
Correction, it's Secretary Hanson.
Thank you. Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Moving down the agenda, let's see, we are at... Ms. Hawkes?
Thank you, President Quigley. Action Report 12.1 this evening. We're seeking your approval on the consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. There's 43 items for certified personnel, 27 for classified, and two for administrative certified personnel.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
And my second action report this evening, 12.2. We are requesting that you waive the first reading for job descriptions and recommend the approval of the proposed job description for Director of College and Career Readiness.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question. Is it common to hire the person first and then do the job description? I guess that bothers me just a little bit.
I think that's fair.
Not typically, but there was some timing issues on this one.
Honestly, there was... The person was in place as a consultant, so I think there was some job description. So, I think that's why it happened. But, yes, you are correct. That would not be the...
I agree. Okay.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. If none, roll call vote, please.
Member Venegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Secretary Hanson?
Yes.[1658.32]
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Next up, superintendent's information reports.
No report.
Legal services.
No report.
AFT report.
No report.
Thank you. Valley View Council report.
No report.
Valley View Office personnel.
No report.
Thank you. Any old business before the board? Any new business before the board? Any questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? Hearing none, seeing none. Any announcements by the board?
I have a couple real quick. First, I'd like to congratulate Brooks Middle School on their IESA Class 3A baseball regional title. They advanced to the sectionals Saturday, 10:00 a.m. at Brooks. So sectional game is this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. Wish them the best. For specifics on the regional championship, I'm sure it'll be posted on our website. I'm keeping it vague just because it was an inner-district regional championship game. So congratulations to Brooks Middle School. And I'd like to... There's been some information out about a new program that's starting, and they're going to be meeting at Bolingbrook High School the second and fourth Wednesday of each month. I was approached by a staff member at Pioneer Elementary about starting a hero program. It's a family support open to anyone with a family member that's currently struggling with addiction, drug abuse, or suspected drug abuse, or currently in recovery. This is something that is very much needed in the area for family members. The closest one right now is about a 45-minute drive. So she has championed this, so I'd like to thank Dr. Mitchum for his support, as well as Ms. Jordan and Bolingbrook High School for their support for allowing them to meet the second and fourth Sunday... Wednesday of each month from 7:00 to 8:30. So if you know of anybody, please get that word out, and I'm sure it'll benefit member... Many members of our community in Valley View. So thank you, Dr. Mitchum and Ms. Jordan.
Any others?
I do. I would like to thank a couple of our supporters out there. I know Target gave a gift to Beverly Skoff, as was mentioned earlier, and also to the[1618.03]